First time you ask. We're all educated people. And I'm gonna ask that we try to stay a little closer to the ultimate percentage of levels. Speak when, after you get approval from the chair. Don't talk amongst each other. So, anyway though, we'll get into our meeting. Oh, no. Speak when, after you get approval from the chair. Don't talk amongst each other. So, anyway though, we'll get into our meeting. Oh, no. Has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Did we hear a motion to approve?
No make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, the many for the previous month? Is there a motion to approve?
I have a question. I guess what is it? Was the bonding scales on? Were what the bonding scales? They only in the gym for this month? The bonding scales, it was, it was taken last month, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is it? Okay.
You hear the second.
Second.
Wrong. All four. Okay, now then the budget report. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that the budget report be approved.
Your second. Second. All four. Okay, now then, this fifth item, we've already approved it. But it wasn't worded right, so it was, it been approved by someone. So, for the records, I ask that you approve it again. It's already been bulk installed, paid for. But we need to, you're gonna make paperwork.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second. Just second.
All four. Now then, we table this last meeting for looking for better prices. I got a better price than what I had. Two sets of single bank chlorine scales. And that's E C S four oh one. Single electronic cylinder scales. Two for forty, two fifty four. If you have a better price, you have a lot.
I don't, I need to see the details of what you need on them, like, are we, are we? Basic, basic price, yes. But as far as the details of what you get, I don't know what you're asking for. Are these scales that are gonna give us a digital readout back to a, to a communication point? Or just something we need to look at on the wall, say it's way this much? Here's a, this particular set here is from Scaletron. It's a dual, dual set, because that's what we were talking about, a dual set instead of singles.
They're gonna have to be singles.
Okay, well, we were talking about a dual set before, right?
Well, we, I think I missed stating this. You know, two singles for the.
The dual set's thirty four hundred and seventy six dollars. I did not get a price on singles, because we were talking about duals. The, now, well, I did get a price on air and gas cylinder scales. And I think it was, you can look here at the three hundred pound scale, four, four twenty million, milliamp with an indicator. It's a thousand forty nine dollar piece. So, I mean, there's a lot of shopping to do on this, I think. If we're just wanting a digital readout on the wall, we're not giving any, we don't need an IP address to give a communications reading to anybody or any particular place. It's just something we want to look at.
Yeah, it's gonna have to, well, it don't have to be.
I guess that's what I need to know, is what?
They'll have to submit a quote. And it'll have to be, if we don't get three bids, they'll have to submit suppliers with a sole source letter stating that they don't want to sell that.
Okay. We can't just ask them for a bid?
To what?
We can't just ask them for a bid to compare to the ones we have already?
Well, if we, if we ask for a bid, we're gonna have to get three bids.
Oh, we haven't got any bids.
We don't want, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's, that's kinda.
Yeah, this, this, uh, one of God is this one, looking at forty three fifty four.
Right.
And they're an Arkansas company.
Okay. Who is it?
Jack Tyler, Little Rock.
Okay. They're not a scale company then?
No, no.
That's an engineering company.
Correct. That's, well, that's, they sell all kind of.
Of course, I'll say anything you want. We'll call it Rob Clark Incorporated. You see, what I meant would be, we need to go to a scale company that, that does scales. Uh, right there in Memphis, there's Memphis, Memphis, on Little Rock side, on Arkansas side, Memphis Scales. We use them, I use them a lot, so I haven't got, I mean, we can get a quote from them. That's Arkansas company.
Are you gonna do that?
Well, I can, I mean, if, if, I thought the mayor was supposed to take care of all that stuff, though.
Well, I done, I done got what I thought was best, Maurice.
Uh, so what's the specs?
Well, yeah, I'm gonna have to have the specs to get the quote, for sure.
What pounds would have to weigh one?
Two fifty, my, the total is two fifty.
Two fifty.
So, a three hundred pound scale.
Three hundred pounds handle it, but you just have to have the digital number.
You want two digital readouts?
Yeah.
Two separate digits?
Single.
Two, that's what I'm saying, two singles, one for each scale, you don't need.
One for this well, and one for.
All of them gonna be in different areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got two pumps, yes, you may have to have a single each pump.
You have one tank here and one tank down there, that's why they have to be one single.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I can, I can get some research on that.
That's what y'all want, and we're gonna put this off for three months.
Well, we can't just blow money, I mean, we need to get the best price, don't we?
You make a move to table it.
I make a motion, we table this till I get some more information.
Second.
Get the correct information, I wanna make sure that we get single scales.
That's second.
Which are typically higher, the dual bottle or single?
Single, single.
Two singles. I'm asking about, you trying to issue?
Uh, the ones that I looked at, the, the dual was more expensive.
No, I mean, it's two separate scales.
Dual is set two, two bottles to you.
There's one scale, I'm scared.
We look at your procedure, because he's not even in the meeting, is he?
Well, I asked you first, I'm gonna play it, but yeah.
Oh, we won't, I mean, what are we doing?
Yeah.
We're going to do it or we're not?
We're gonna do it.
Okay.
We're gonna do it. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the water tank. Water tank bids come in, we had several bids, and they were all way, way above money. We had one bid that was within, the low bid, I put that away. But after the bid was opened, we discovered that there was an error made, and our tank has lead hanging on it. So, that brings a new story to the, to the table. So, anyway though, we've had the tank paint inspected and found that it was way over the minimum of lead contact, content. So, we're gonna have to go back to bid again. Bid will be advertised in the paper this Sunday, and in two weeks it'll be advertised again. And then after that, it'll be, it will be open for repainting the tank, it's sandblasting down bare metal. It'll have to be, it'll have to be ca- uh, contained in something. So, anyway though, that's gonna hook the price probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars. So, we'll just wait and see what the bids comes in, looks like, and go back to the funding agency and hope that we can get more money. We don't know what we can, so, but anyway though, that's where we stand on, on water tower. Nothing to take a bid, take a vote on there.
What were we going on this year?
On the water tower? That was just an update.
Oh, I thought it was, okay, I was just updating, okay, I thought you said something.
Letting know that it's probably gonna cost us a lot more than we originally intended. Because of lead paint.
Okay.
If, if we can't get any money from that source, would there be any other sources to possibly go to?
Go on.
And then carry it ourselves?
Yeah. Yeah, so, but anyway though, that's, that's where we stand on the water tank. Now then, the next item on the agenda is the construction of a, a van. Bids were open on that also this past week, and, uh, all the bids came in way over our money.
How many bids did we get?
Three.
Do I have to overstate, we got three bids?
Tuesday, two, that's counting one, both. So, uh, but anyway, though, all of them were over the money. So, that put us back to the drawing board to see what we could come up with as far as reductions is concerned. Bull and Bains was the, uh, a little bidder, which was a hundred and six thousand. And, uh, the time we had on another twenty thousand for engineering and all the other fees and charges, we'd have up to about a hundred and twenty six thousand. So, we oughta keep that below a hundred thousand. And we gotta keep the building below eighty five thousand. So, Bull and Bains, uh, let me say this first, so, this building is sixty foot long, twenty four foot wide. It stands on, uh, wooden columns. An old wooden column for the engineer designer would be twelve inches square. And they had planned for it to be cypress. Well, cypress is pretty high. So, if we reduce the, the columns from cypress to pine, that would save us some money. Now, the decking, the roof, and I don't know why they had this on there to start with, but they had it with solid plywood decking. And then it was gonna put metal oak, metal roofing on top of that. Well, if we took the decking off and put lath on it, that would save us a sum of money. Now then, it also was designed to have a ceiling in it, uh, just like a house room. If we left off the ceiling, now, this is something that, that, in my opinion, we can do ourselves, as we can. Now then, another good thing that they have suggested to leave off would be, it's got designed to have fans, ceiling fans, ceiling lights, and some electrical outlets on the columns around the building. If we leave off the electrical part for us to do later on, that would save us a sum of money. Now then, we had asked to have a sink, a little cabinet with a sink in it, uh, for worship, whatever. If we leave that off, that's something we could very easily do ourselves later on. Now then, the original design was for four handicap parking spots, and that to be asphalt. And the walkway from the parking lot to the pavilion would be overlaid asphalt, it'd be our existing walkway, but it would be asphalt overlaid. If we change that to one handicap spot, which the funding agency has said that's okay. Uh, if we change that to one spot that can pour concrete, and that would reduce, uh, the cost a little more. That would bring a total of twenty one thousand five hundred eighty six dollars in reduction, which would put us down to eighty five thousand. Now then, this pavilion, Joanne is the administrator of it, so, uh, she wants to do some more looking around, but my question to y'all is, if we accept this proposal for leaving off these items, then would y'all agree to the city doing that later on as we can? Maybe one at a time, electric can add, and water later on, with ceiling in, as we could?
No, I won't.
So, what are you gonna do?
What did Little Rock say we need to do?
They said, figure out how to do it and do it.
I thought, did they not say that we need to get some more bids to put it back out there for bid? I was under the impression that we, we were talking about, uh, our best bid would be put it back out there for bid.
That, that had been suggested, all right.
Has that, has that been voted on through that committee?
No, they hadn't, this, this just come to our attention right here.
So, the, the committee hadn't voted to put it back up for bid? I may be misunderstanding what I'm.
No, this hasn't been brought to the committee yet.
Not this. The fact that the bids were over the money? And that, that they didn't know the bids was over the money, the committee hadn't?
I'm sure they did, Joanne.
Uh, yes, when we met last week, we had the bids, we knew that we were over budget. And at that time, we discussed, uh, the elimination of these things that we're talking about now. And the committee agreed that this was too much to put back into the city. You know, you're talking, we didn't have the exact number at that time, but with the amount that was on our itemized listing, we would then be saying, well, we pay this, and then the city pays that. What we had originally said, when we initially started, that we would apply for the phase two grant, for, which is a matching grant. So, if you were gonna put twenty one thousand dollars into it, the state would match it. So, I felt like that was a better use of city money than you just spending twenty one thousand dollars, when we have the opportunity to make that forty two thousand dollars. Also, when I spoke with Matt McNair, who is over our, um, the Heritage and Art Times Grant, um, he said that, yes, we could repost this, and that we should be able to get, uh, bids that would encompass what we asked for. And he said that if we reposted, that he would help us. So, my thing is.
He would send some people ordinations, uh, to, hey, get up these folks out, go down, yeah, I got you.
Yes, so, and possibly he will be here tomorrow at the opening, at the groundbreaking. And I am wanting to not commit to eliminating all of this yet.
We can't commit to anything, to repost it, if that's what he suggested, he wants to help us get it.
And he did say that if we chose not to do what we said, do these things, then that's up to us. But our committee said that we wanted to repost.
And y'all voted on it, and the committee voted to repost?
We, we discussed it and verbally stated that we wanted to, yes.
Mr. Mayor. So, based off the council has to do is just decline the proposal, and let evil, is that right?
What I was asking y'all to do.
I mean, whoever.
It's the fun part, committee.
It's the fun part, right, the fun part, committee, right.
What I was asking y'all to do was, if we decided to leave these items off and do them later on, would the city, would the council agree for the city to do these items as we could after the pavilion?
I'm gonna be honest with you, Mr. Mayor, can I speak with you? I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't think it'll be done. I don't think we'll ever get it done. I, is one a licensed electrician? Do we have, we have to pay a licensed electrician to come in and do it, right?
We got a licensed electrician here in town.
Who, that works for the city?
Well, no, he does work for the city.
If he had one department, okay.
He does work for the city. Who is, he's not a full-time employee, but he does work for us if we need him.
What's his name, Juan?
Trouble Bullock.
Okay. So, he's gonna come over here and wire it up?
Well, he'll help us. I mean, we do most of the work ourselves, but yes, we gotta have a licensed electrician over there, and he will help us, yes.
He'll put a stamp on it, if it needs coal.
Then we, uh, I guess Juan probably got the plumbing part under him, didn't he?
Yeah, I can't do the plumbing.
You can't?
Inspector, I can't do my plumbing.
See, then you gotta hire a licensed plumber to do the plumbing. We, if we're gonna do this, it's, we need to, we need to post it back up, try to get more bids. If we cut this out, that's one of the things, man, I don't want bigger tires on my truck, but I'm not gonna buy it with bigger tires right now, I'm gonna get them later, and I never go get them. Y'all know what I'm talking about. What are we voting on?
Okay. To approve it or not to approve it? So, if you don't want to approve it, you just vote not to accept it?
Well, I don't think, I don't think Mr. Mayor was through with this presentation, so you're through with it? Okay, so you're asking us?
To authorize the city to do these items after the fact.
I make a motion that we do not authorize the city to do those items after the fact.
That's second.
So, just for my clarity, can't, can't, can they not re, uh, bid, let it out?
Yeah, they can rebid it, but now the engineer is the one that, that does all of this, and every time he does something else, well, his, his fee goes up. So, are we gonna save what we, uh, spent in addition?
Okay, I got another question for you. How much ARPA money do we have left?
Uh, don't really know exactly, but not much.
You don't know exactly, but not much?
No.
Is any of this reported?
No.
How much ARPA money do we have left?
I know, but what do we?
That's, I want, I just wanna know how much ARPA money we have left?
The reason I'm asking is, because sometimes we start going all over the place, and so let's just stick to one thing, and then we close that out, then we'll bring something up, we will. So, are we gonna go on to do it or not to do it?
Well.
Then we do, then we can talk about that. So, I'm saying, you, you, you bunching a whole bunch of things together?
No, I'm not, Mr. Maurice, I wanna know how much ARPA money we have left, is that a option to put, to pay for this extra that it's gonna cost on this, is what I'm asking?
We have to vote, and you can't just, you have to bring up a proposal to do that. You can't just say how much ARPA money we got, and we're gonna do it. We have, we're doing one thing, let's do that, close it out, then if you wanna bring up something else, you can't, 'cause I'm saying, you have a right to do it. Put your bunching a bunch of things together, and it's confusing.
Are we not having a conversation about how we need to handle this situation?
Well, that's another conversation.
We got a motion to, uh, rebid, is that right?
I got a question.
All right, and we got a second to rebid, right?
Right.
Do you hear a motion? All right.
I have a question.
Now you read it.
Okay.
Why is the city even involved in the rebidding? Don't they have a committee for that?
Wrong. You can have committees and committees and subcommittees and committees and committees, but the city is ultimately responsible for all of it.
I understand that, but you're asking us to make a decision on something that we have no, no idea of what's going on, Mr. Joanne is taking care of all of that.
I just got to tell you what's going on.
Okay, and I guess we, we made our decision on that, we're gonna, we wanna rebid it, so I'm good with that.
All right. Okay, uh, Joanne, uh, you were the decision, so, uh, we can talk to Daniel and see what his, uh, anybody has and go from there.
Okay.
Okay, uh, last on agenda is, uh, Maurice has asked to address the council. So, Maurice, who is yours?
Okay, uh, last council meeting I got tabled, and, uh, Councilman Clark wrote that there was a complaint against the mayor, and we take all complaints seriously, and we think they need to be addressed. I said, but, uh, the thing that I didn't quite understand, I wouldn't, didn't understand all of the details, so right now, I wanna ask some questions, so that I get all the details on what happened. Is that, is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, so, if I, if my understanding is correct, okay, uh, Eva wanted to have a bingo game, is, is that correct? Is that your understanding, Mr. Mayor? Is that's correct, Eva?
Yes.
Okay, and Eva asked the mayor if they could use the storm shelter facility to have the bingo game, is, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm also correct that, Mayor, you agreed to let them have it at no charges, is that correct? So, is that correct?
That's correct, because it's a community of the.
It's a community of the.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, then, uh, the question came up about some chairs, that there was not enough chairs provided, is that correct? Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I think I asked you the question, I said, normally are, there are certain amount of chairs that's available at any one time for anyone using, you ain't got number, what?
There's, there's normally about eighty, eighty-five chairs that stays in this shelter park, except, and that's what was another particular thing.
Okay, and you also asked me to talk to Juan, so Juan, did you agree with that number that he was about?
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay. Even when y'all got there, was it that many chairs there available, y'all, you agree with that number?
I'll be honest with you, I didn't count the chairs. Uh, their chairs were located in two different places. There were some hard plastic chairs with metal that are lined up, that are stacked on top of each other, they're lined up against the wall of the actual storm shelter.
Okay.
There were some additional chairs that looked just like this, that are in a se- the separate room, um, everybody refers to it as the nine one one room.
Okay.
There were several of those stacked up. Um, so we put out as, because when you put on events such as that, you don't know how many people are going to attend, you, you don't have a way of having that number presented. So, we tried to put out as many tables and as many chairs to accommodate as many people as could, you know, because you wouldn't wanna turn them away.
Okay, so after you put out the number of chairs, can you give me an estimate about how many tables that you could accommodate at the time of chairs?
I, I'll be honest, I can't.
Okay, but later on?
I know, I know that there were tables already in there, they were leaned up against the wall.
So, I mean, was it enough for ten people, twenty, thirty, forty?
I'm just, I wanted accurate information, I'm not good with that kind of.
Reason I'm asking is, uh, there was determined that there wasn't enough seats, and there was a request for more seats on it.
So, prior to the event occurring?
Right, so what was determining factor that more tables and chairs were needed? 'Cause I don't have.
Because we had, we had, my thought was, I wanted to use every table and every chair available to us to put out, in case we had that many people walk through the door. I didn't want anybody to turn away, because we didn't have a place to sit. So, we used the tables that were leaned up against the wall that were already located inside the storm shelter. My workers and I took a picture of the eight tables that were in the firemen's training room, took a picture just as it laid out, right there. We folded those up, and we moved those tables into the storm shelter. Um, we then had Fox came up, well, we contacted Dale around the world, we finally got Fox up there, he opened the room, and he helped us get the remaining chairs that were in there, out into the hall, so that we could use those.
All right, so, so, you are saying that the remaining chairs, Mr. Fox? All right, so, so you are saying that the remaining chairs, Mr. Fox came and gave you the remaining chairs?
Yes.
In the room?
Yes.
Okay, so if the remaining chairs was given, I'm not sure what the question is about.
Okay, I can tell you that. So, at our first bingo back last year, when we went to set up, we had a section, an area for our vendors. We actually charged vendors a vendor fee to come in and set up their goods and wares to sell. We used the remainder of the room to set up our tables and chairs. We then used the nine-one-one room for our concession stand. I didn't know it was off limits, when we were there, the door was open and it was a, i- it was isolated so that it, the noise from it wouldn't interfere with the people playing bingo. So, we set up our concession stand in the nine-one-one command center. We made a L shape, which literally blocked off all of the, uh, stuff that was behind it. Um, when you walk in the door, there's a, there's an old couch to the left. Then you go to that wall, there's two, uh, lead desks that have like, look like old monitors, maybe some keyboards, a lot of wire, but it's all up against the wall. You come around the other wall, there's recliners, there's two recliners in there, then another desk.
Can I ask a question? I understand what you're saying, okay, but from what you're saying is, you had access to the entire building, including nine-one-one room?
On the first one.
And you have all, and you have all the tables and chairs?
Yes, on the first end.
But the complaint is that the mayor didn't provide tables and chairs, but if all the tables and chairs were in use, I'm not understanding.
Okay, so, uh, the complaint was, after we used those, whenever I was talking to Dale on the phone, he said, you will not be allowed to ever move a table from one room to another, meaning from the firemen's training room into the storm shelter. And I said, why? And he said, just because I said that.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Mayor? Cause like I said, I'm still not understanding the complaint, see, because, I understand what you're saying, cause now there's another complaint about a room. Okay, but is the complaint that the mayor did not let Eva have enough tables and chairs, is that a valid complaint?
At that, whether he let us, I, I guess I can't say he let us, we moved them, we, I didn't realize that I had to ask permission to move the table from one room to the other.
Okay, but my, my point is.
We did use them.
Or, or, like I said, we were doing multiple things.
I got you.
Two, one at a time.
I got you.
Okay.
So, yes, to answer your question, yes, we did move them, he didn't give us permission, we didn't ask.
I'm not on the movie part.
Okay, gotcha.
I'm just saying, Eva was provided enough tables and chairs, because you just said.
Yes.
You had all of them.
Yes.
So, the complaint that he didn't, that you haven't taken chairs is not really the point, there's another point to get to.
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, what, did, what did you, what did they bring to you was the point, cause like I said, that's why I'm lost, is we've got fac- faceted tables and chairs. Did someone just write another problem to you or what?
No, the problem was that they wanted to use that room.
The nine-one-one room?
Yeah. And we call it that just for the lack of a better name, but it's not per se nine-one-one, it's emergency operations.
So, so that, okay, I'm sorry, wait.
For the city event and the council. In that room, there's, there's radios that will, uh, if the jail, the dispatch center to jail, something happened and it went down, there's radios up there that will pick up and go on with their normal operation without interruption. Uh, if it's gonna be a length of time, then AT&T will bring us a portable nine-one-one telephone center where we can answer all nine-one-one calls. So, it's set up for emergency operations.
Okay, so if I'm, if I'm correct in what I'm saying, okay, it was after the fact that you found out that you weren't able to use the nine-one-one room, is that right?
Correct.
Right, so, okay, so up to that point, it was okay, so the question is now.
It was the day of, the day of.
Right, the day of, so, okay, so, so, is what the mayor proposing is, is that from now on, you can have access to all the rooms but the nine-one-one room, is that what you're saying, Mr. Mayor? Is that a problem?
I'll be honest, knowing that now, we, whether it's a problem or not, we'll have to work around it. Um, we won't be able to have as large of an event because we won't be able to bring in our vendors like we did in the past. This last time, we did not bring in vendors because we quickly put together this bingo and we didn't have enough time to advertise for vendors. Had we advertised for vendors, where we had to put the concession stand, would not have been available because we, we were already allowing vendors, that, that's exactly where our vendors were supposed to be. So, and that's why we were trying to use that other room. Uh, again, the room is wide open, the stuff that he's talking about is all along the walls. The two ladies that were in there working that room were two very distinguished members of this community, Jewel Allen and Ms. Sandy Skaggs. No one got back behind the table except them, they were the only ones working the room.
So, my question is again, so what you're asking for now is permission to use the nine-one-one room, right?
It, it would be ideal, yes, because it would allow us to utilize the room to its maximum capability, we would be able to have our vendors, plus do our event, plus have a separate room for our concession stand.
And, Mr. Mayor, your argument is, is that this is after the fact, you want from now on that since it does have the nine-one-one equipment in it, that, that would be off limit to anyone who wants to rent the building?
It needs to be off limit to anything. And I was not aware that they even had vendors at this bingo game. If they do have vendors at this bingo game making money, then why don't Eva kinda reimburse the city for the electrical cost?
I'd like to answer that, because Eva puts all of our money back into the city. We turn around, we use one event to help us pay for the next, so the bingo in question that he's talking about helped us to pay for the July event.
Okay, now, here's what, again, what I'm saying, now, see how we getting multiple things, okay, let's do one thing first.
Okay.
Okay, first thing, uh, the complaint against the mayor not providing enough tables and chairs, is everyone agree that that's not a valid complaint? So, we can scratch that off the table, is that correct?
At this time, but now my understanding.
Oh, no, 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 just doing one thing at a time, just doing one thing at a time.
Yes.
So, that complaint is not a valid complaint, we can scratch that off the table. Uh, second, the second thing is, we have to decide whether they have access to the nine-one-one room. And now, the mayor said that it's nine-one-one equipment in there, now I make a motion, and since it is nine-one-one equipment, it's a sensitive, I make a motion that the nine-one-one room be off limit to anyone who wants to rent the building. You have, is that, is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, sure.
Counsel.
I, I would do, I'd go along with that, I mean, there's three other rooms or one big room L shape that can be broken up into three separate rooms, uh, with, without even using that room.
May I ask a question? So, when you say it cannot be used, when the city puts on a function, it can't use it either, correct? Because that room has been used in the past at two different, uh, city appreciation dinners, that's where the food was served from. And that's why I didn't feel like it was out of the question that we could use, it had already been being used for basically a concession stand area.
What should I do on that, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, so far as the room's concerned, to start with, I would never ask to use the room. I would ask to get those chairs, if they can have those chairs out. I sent Fox up there to open the door, let them have it, they did. Well, then, later on, the question come about asking for the room.
Well, I mean, my question now is, should we close the room off to any use except for official business?
Yep.
I, yeah. So, mayor has moved, so, I, I'm for closing it off except for official, including mayor's office.
All right, this comment, uh, that's not true. When Fox, after he opened it for me and I said, are you gonna leave it open, he said, no, I was told to lock it back. I then called Dale back and said, we need to use this room, and he said, no, and I said, why not, and he said, because I said.
I mean, I, and, and I agree, that's what I'm saying, I, we, we want the council to be in agreement.
Correct.
That way, if this comes up again, it won't be a problem for him or for y'all, cause we'll know what we.
I just wanted to set the record straight, he, he knew prior to the event taking place, hours, not long, but hours.
Yeah, and only the last, for the, you know, it's like, when, when Councilman Clark presented, I had no information, I was kinda confused, so.
Um, I do have one other point.
Sure.
Um, again, he stated to me, I could not move tables from the firemen's training room into the storm shelter. Um, and he says, I noticed at the last, um, meeting that we had in there, there's now stickers on them that says, firemen training room. Um, so, it, does that stand also, you can't move a table from one room to the next?
Hold it, hold it, okay, so, is the council in agreement that the nine-one-one room will be off limit?
You had a motion in a second.
I'm hoping that the nine-one-one will be off limits.
Off limits for anything except nine-one-one?
Right, right.
Murder shop, right?
Murder shop operation. I'll say the motion. As for any business.
We have a motion in two seconds, so we'll vote.
Okay. Now, your next question was?
Um, I was also told that we could not move tables from the firemen's training room into the storm shelter, even though after our event was over, we put everything right back exactly like we had taken it out, so that's my question. Will we be able to move furniture, um, that is portable, I mean, those tables are basically portable tables, they're fold-up, lifetime tables to be moved, just a minute.
That's, that's, that's a decision for me, and I say no.
Can I ask you one? If we're doing a city event, um, it's a portable table and we place them back exactly like they were being used?
No.
So, then the firemen can't use them outside either anymore?
Do what?
The firemen can't move them either anymore, like outside to do their cooking and stuff like that?
That, the furniture's to be left in that particular room. Now, we're gonna move them tomorrow for, for this event.
Now, if it's to be left in the room, that's where it's gotta be left in the room.
For this event for the pavilion.
So, we pick and choose what we move them for?
Do what?
We pick and choose what we move them for?
No. We're gonna move them tomorrow for this event, although we've already said we were.
And now, but I'm still kinda lost on this, okay, now, so the firemen chairs over in the fire department?
Uh, in the firemen's training room.
Okay, good.
If you walk down the hallway, yes, sir, if you walk down the hallway, the first room you're gonna come to is the library. The next room you're gonna come to is what they call the firemen's training room. And then the next room is, uh, like a little kitchenette, it doesn't have all the kitchenette things, but that's what you would, um, see it as, a kitchenette, it's got sinks and, um, cutting areas, it's got the ice maker, that kinda thing. And then past that, you go into the storm shelter.
Okay, and it was needed for, oh, the last, for future events, so you're saying? I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, so, so that's what I'm saying, I mean, we moved those tables over there because after we got, we needed as many tables, cause again, on an event like that, you don't know if you're gonna have one or a hundred and one people come, you would not want to have an event and not have an appropriate place for everybody to sit, so you have to over, um, prepare it, I guess is the right thing.
Okay, so, I, I guess, the reason I'm asking, okay, so, with the movement of the chairs, with or without permission?
The table, so, no, I did not ask permission, I didn't think it was that.
And I think that's what the mayor said, that chairs should not be moved without the first.
No, he said that he wouldn't, he said that we couldn't move them whether we asked or not, and they have to remain in the room.
Okay, so, I'm just asking, Claire, is that what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, or you asked it for permission? One reason I'm asking, have you said that never, or is you want people to ask for permission before they move chairs, or? To see if they allow to move chairs?
Uh, well, let's rethink that. My reasoning for moving tables, chairs, and lots of others, but moving tables from one room to another, you're gonna get the doors facing, being banged up, you're gonna get the tables scratched up, and just lots of things. Now, if we want to, uh, say special occasions after, uh, asking permission, well, then, I'd go along with that.
Right, so, but you want people to ask permission before they move it, and I think that's what he's saying, that before you move any table, ask permission first, doesn't. I think the problem seems to come, that is, that chairs are being moved without permission first, i- is that what I'm saying?
How many chairs and tables is in the firemen's training room?
Supposed to be fifty.
Fifty cha- fifty chairs, how many tables?
Fifty, fifty chairs, we eight tables.
Eight tables.
To six quarters.
I make a motion, somebody gets a quote on fifty chairs and eight tables, and we buy them and put them in the other room over, and that way I set the cure up, we never have to touch those chairs and tables again.
That's what I'm saying, yes, that's a, that's a good point, yes, just, just do a fundraiser, raise money, and put some extra tables in there.
Buy eight more tables. Find out what the chairs, if we can find some chairs, get some quote on the chairs or something, and let's just put them in there, now they're in there, this is a done deal. I don't know what it's gonna cost, I mean, we'll have to vote on that when we get quotes on it.
Tables are about a hundred dollars a piece, I think.
For the tables?
About a hundred dollars a piece. And chairs?
They're probably twelve, fourteen dollars a piece, if you look at fifty of them, it's quite a bit, I mean.
Those chairs are, they're one twenty-five.
Yeah. So, we're talking about two thousand dollars?
We, uh, yeah. Uh, keep in mind, spending money, keep in mind, if, by everything we do, it is double the price. Like our insurance, it's by your double the price. So, we're gonna be spending a lot more money and we're gonna be taking in a lot less money.
Well, we just changed insurance company to a municipal insurance company, correct?
Yeah.
We got a real good deal.
Yeah, we got a real good deal, and then our good deal is still a good deal, but it went up.
Keep that going, I don't, I mean, I, I, I understand that. But surely we've got enough arper money left to buy some tables and chairs and put them in other rooms, this is not an issue any longer?
I don't think we can spend arper money on tables and chairs, I don't think.
Can you find out, I don't know, I don't know what I'm expecting or not.
Sure, if you can.
How many tables and chairs are in that room to, to begin with?
In a, in the shelter, there's eighty-five chairs in there that's there all the time, not even what might be in the.
Communication.
Communication.
Well, that's all limits, so we're not gonna take anything or put anything in there or take anything out of here.
There's eighty, there's eighty-five chairs in there.
What about tables?
And there's how many tables in there, Juan?
I'll tell you, that's eleven tables.
Eleven tables?
Eleven tables.
So, we're looking at eight more tables and fifty chairs. Is that correct, can we, can we just get a price on it and see what it's gonna cost us? Will that take care of this issue? That, that way you'll never, I mean, there's no reason that they ever take anything out of the firemen's park, uh, training area again.
Just, just, just many.
We gotta get a quote first.
Now then, uh, you can't get quotes on stuff from the circus thing, but there's, at random times, there's a pretty damn good deal that the circus center, or chairs, now, I've never seen any tables up there, tables are generally beyond where they want.
Yeah.
But now chairs, the chairs that's up there now, the fifty kinda little maroon-like colored, British colored seats on them, I think we paid about two dollars a piece for them. So, we go to the circus center, we might could get some chairs for a bit of a price.
I'm good, I, I, it doesn't have to be a big reclining chair, a chair is a chair, if you're going up there, you're going up there for a couple hours, five hours, and you're not planning to, you know, two or three weeks there.
But what, what I'm saying.
A chair is a chair.
What I'm saying overall is, you can't get beds from the circus center.
Right, right, and we can find them.
You go up there and say, I want that now, you take it now.
How do we need to approach that? Just when y'all, when, when Juan has chairs?
I, I need to buy some tables and chairs, right?
I make a motion, we authorize Mr. Booker to buy some tables and chairs for the fifty chairs and eight tables, for the storm shelter.
I see.
Did you only catch a second?
I did, I said it.
Did you have a question, Brad?
No, they, they, they were shut off.
Okay, all part. Okay. All right. Is that, lined that up, Maurice?
Yes, sir.
Right, yeah. All right. Joanne, did you have anything to bring up, Jackie, Jackie?
Yeah, getting back, got a top hour. Getting back on his bed, on his.
Getting back on this bid on this pavilion, it's a twenty-six by forty?
Twenty-four by sixty.
Twenty-four by sixty, what determines the specifications, I mean, I don't know where they come up with cypress, or four-by-four pine, or wooden deck and stuff like that, I, I don't know.
Spears engineered, engineering, um, rolled up the specs for the pavilion, and they put it out for bid.
And so, one, my question is, is why don't we just run a metal building like yours, kinda like what you built, with purlins on it, and tin, and beam that's put together on concrete slab?
It'd be a lot cheaper.
Yeah, and then it's maintenance free.
But, well, then you gotta go back and have it completely re-engineered.
Well, I'm like-
And we'll pay another ten thousand dollars for engineering.
I, I don't think so, I'm, I'm offering my services, I've got two engineers that can do this, certified engineers, and there's three contractors that can do this job, and I really think like we can do it cheaper if I can get permission from you. I need the specifications, twenty-six by sixty, concrete slab, twenty-four whatever, I need the print of, of where the cypress is coming in at.
Man, that's the crazy, I couldn't believe you said it, we-
I don't know why a certified engineer won't put in the I-B-R-E, won't put pine, or board, and an armpit on it. Well, they deliver right up on specifications. Spears or whatever, whoever dictates, have their right to know the specifications, and I don't have a grant work, but we could build that building a lot cheaper. I promise you, Mr. Dale, you know that.
I, I believe it, that's why it needs to be reposted, so that we can get somebody to-
Well, when you repost it, can I get a copy of the print, and may I get a bid, uh, Mr. Dale? Uh, or get somebody to learn anything?
You can bid on it.
Well, I'm not gonna bid on it.
Your engineers can bid on it.
But if the engineering part's done, a twenty-six by sixty building on concrete slab, having stuff, the water, electricity, and then you could go back later on, do a lot easier, but, that cypress and that decking and that plank and all that, it's, it's pretty expensive, and I don't- Why, why does Spears Engineering wanna do that?
Well, Spears didn't actually design it, and they had a building designer design it, and I don't even know who it was, but, it's, it's to last for a longer time. Now, the difference in the price and pine and cypress is ridiculous.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I mean, I mean, yes, I'd love to see cypress in there, but I, that's, I think those, let's see, eight posts, I think were something like five thousand dollars, just for the posts.
Well, why can't we use four-inch I-beam and have it there painted and bolted down?
There, there's lots of other options. Uh, back then, there was a building company, Intex County, that builds metal buildings, that, he didn't bid, but he submitted a quote for six-five thousand.
For the same size of building?
I, I, I just don't see why, I, I said, no, that's just a building, that's not electrical or plumbing.
That knows all of it.
Oh, that's everything, six-five, if you're done it out of metal. So we need to go back to Spears and say, first of all, I, I have a little bit of a question here with Spears. We paid Spears to do a job, and they contracted it up to somebody else?
Yeah, they're not building engineers.
Well, why do we choose them, why do we, why do we choose a building engineer?
Our, that, that's our, our engineer, that's, that's the company that the city go through for engineering days.
Were we contracted with him?
Well, no, we don't pay him on an annual basis, if that's what you're saying.
I mean, we haven't signed a contract, we can, we can use other people, correct?
Well, yeah, we can use whoever.
I'm just, I mean, I'm on, it's like me saying, hey, man, I need some tires on my truck.
Mr. Dale, with your permission, Joanne, the I-P-O-S to gather up a couple bids on this building, or you'd rather me not do it?
I would, I would love for you to work with Joanne, and she is administrator of this property.
Okay, so I can work with her?
Although she's working under the city, but she's a manager.
And I will get the specifications that, that they've already designed, and then if you see where it needs to be adjusted, and you need to modify it before we put it back out there.
Rob, I have access to certified engineers, they're, they're no charge, they're, they're friends with us. They said, he thinks head engineer at the Millennium, there's two contractors.
But he's a steel engineer, I mean, that's what he does.
That's what he does, but, will we not be better off, and we'll get the different visual plate guy, whatever, but if we get the electrical and water stub for that concrete, could we handle it from there, Mr. Dale, and save us a boot of money on that deal, couldn't we?
Yeah. What, what I would hope for, is if we could get a bill, bid for the building, and save enough money for us to buy the material, and we do the labor.
They're not gonna let you save that money and buy something down the line, it's either you use it now, or you're gonna-
Whatever other, no, 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 you go back.
I, I'm not talking about down the line, Joanne, I'm talking about when the building is finished, that contract finishes the building, then we immediately go in and start with this electrical and, and the plumbing. I'm not talking about down next month, next week, I'm talking about just immediately, the contractor, whoever builds the building, after they get through, then we start on the electrical and plumbing.
Is it possible to get the specifications meet again, and let these gentlemen take a look at it, and just look at the red flags? Because I'm certain there's some red flags, this was only posted in the Arkansas Gazette, so I don't think our local people truly had the opportunity to bid on this.
Uh, I got a bill from the good Texas County Gazette, it was posted down there.
In Texas County, well, maybe so, but, because that building is going to be here, you should have used, not you, they should have used HopePrescott.com, should have been in-
That, that, that's a hearsay, that's a delian, that's going forward now, please, but, will you allow me to help get a bid on this?
Absolutely.
God has your blessing, Mr. Dale.
Sure do.
Okay, I've got an engineer we'll all link with, okay, and get a note, and then-
It's a good point, you and Joanne, that's what we're-
Let's spend our money on the building, and then, and the concrete, and then the next, uh, we could get done pretty quick, that's something we can't do, me and Rob can do the electrical stuff.
Can, can, I understand, be licensed, it's very licensed.
We can work under River Bullet, shit.
Yeah, we got to sign off on it, the warranty, the same way we have the stub there, you know. But we, that may not-
Get his license, be on-
That's what we're saying, that's why we're waiting, you know, it's all like we know, it's simple, we're in, we're in, we're in.
You might get the concrete building up by December. Now, that ain't gonna work if that, um.
I have a gentleman out of Prescott, who has made contact on my, well, he would love to bid on it, he's a, he's a building contractor.
You can't get a contractor here.
Okay, I, I, I move to, uh, that Mr. Jackie wore with Eva on the, uh, what are these?
Fun park.
Fun park, yeah.
Fun park. But that's all we need to do with this city, it's okay.
Yeah, I didn't know we had to make a motion to do that.
We gotta get out of there.
Rob, looks like it's-
Let's not close the meeting.
Okay, I'll take it. Now, I make a motion, we do, shut the meeting down.
One last thing, one last thing, um, may I remind you, tomorrow is the groundbreaking ceremony for the pavilion, and even though it's still up in the air, we're moving forward. So, please come out, we've got some, um, speak, dynamic speakers that are going to, uh, talk to us about the benefits of having the pavilion, and how it will help our community, so, if you have the opportunity, it's at eleven o'clock, um, come out, make that your lunch break tomorrow, we're only gonna be one hour, and if you linger longer, that's on you, but, yes, yes, refreshments.
Well, we have a fresh, for a fresh-
Oh, that's a surprise, that's really good.
What about a sandwich if we're going to do lunch?
Yeah, it's lunch, you've got lunch. You will be full, you'll be full when you go back to work.
Okay, one thing that I ask, is, we haven't accomplished a whole lot this year, because we put too many things on the tables, and then when we come back up again, we put them on the table for something else. Well, let's, let's start, these agendas come out ahead of time, so, I hope we can start getting all our things together for the council, or we can vote on that and get something done. So, Jackie, did you have your hand up?
No, I've had a crayon. I had a crayon, bro.
All right, if no other?
One question, I haven't gave my Eva report.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay, um, so, one of the things that we did this year that we've never done in the past, um, the foundation for Eva was created to, for the beautification of Emmett, to help our neighbors and that kind of thing. Thirty years ago, when this group was originated, it basically was neighbor helping neighbor, if they saw a neighbor was struggling to keep their yard up, they helped them clean their yard up, things of that nature. So, that's not really something in this day and time that we can do with a small group that we have, so, we decided to come up with a new program, um, we actually patterned it after Prescott and Hope, and do a yard of the month. And so, for July, our committee, our Eva group, voted on a yard of the month, um, and that will be announced on Monday, we're gonna make a big announcement. Uh, Southern Graphics has donated the actual yard sign that will go in the people's yard, saying yard of the month, um, you know, sponsored by the Emmett Vision Association. Uh, so that, we will, we will actually, um, announce that Monday, we had four homes that were nominated, and then the committee voted, and then the one who received the most votes, uh, won. The other thing that we are doing, um, we felt like our July event was a huge success, um, you know, it was very hot, um, it was hard, you know, for the vendors, the potential vendors to make money, because the attendance during the day was not as great as it was last year because of the heat and the weather, but once it kinda clouded over a little bit, and the time kinda got, uh, later in the evening, the temperature kinda cooled off a little bit, and people really started pouring in. Uh, we had a lot of positive feedback on the food, I know the food vendors did really, really well, and also, um, the train activity that we provided for free for the children, uh, did really, really well, along with the trick horse show. Um, everybody, uh, really liked the band, there were a few people who liked more of a country style band, this band was more diversified. It had rock, it had, you know, jazz, it had blues, the whole nine yards, so it, it met a lot of different, um, needs in the community, and, and we had a lot of good feedback there. Um, so kinda to, to answer your question about what do we do with the Eva money, it's basically that, we do one event to raise money to help pay for the next, and try to have a little bit of seed money left to again, move us into the next event, so that's how we are able to do that. So the next event that's coming up for us, um, we're gonna try to get ready for our fall festival. Um, we, Prescott and Hope have already announced their days that they're doing their fall festival, we wanna be good neighbors, so we delayed the date that has not been selected. Our fall festival this year for the third annual, uh, time will be on October twenty-first. Um, we have decided, since it's a good ways away from the actual, quote, Halloween, we're not gonna do the trunk or treat this year, we're gonna do more, uh, like, games and activities, still be able to give out candy to the children, or doing their activities and that kind of thing, but we also wanna make it fun for the adults. Uh, we're currently looking at possibly doing a domino tournament, a cornhole tournament, and maybe a bingo. Um, that's the three things that we're looking at for the older people, um, and then we are looking into, this time, instead of having a band, because bands are very expensive, we're looking at a DJ type situation, who can just play a variety of music, still have music and festivities and that kind of thing. Um, to get ready and prepare for that October event, um, we need to plan our next fundraiser, so we have decided to tentatively look at September sixteenth, we wanna do a movie night, of course, the ideal setting would be down in the fireman park, if they have not started construction and that kind of thing. Um, basically, we'll not be able to charge for the movie, because of course, they're copyrighted, but we would put together a meal plan, like, you know, a hot dog, chips, drink, and candy bar for, say, ten dollars, if you just wanted a snack pack of, you know, a hot, um, popcorn and a-
Drink.
A drink, that could be so much, you know, we'd have to create those to be able to get the money in. Um, we are tentatively on that, because I've not been able to reach Mr. John Smiley, who has that type of equipment, to see if that date is open, but tentatively, that is where we're at on that. Um, let's see, the only other thing we do every year, uh, we annually do, uh, the Highway sixty-seven garage sale. We do, uh, Mike Otwell allows us to use his property out on Highway sixty-seven, so we are notifying the community that we are accepting donations for any type of garage sale items that they like to donate to us for that event, we'll be doing that on October the seventh. Um, other than that, I think that's all we've got.
All right, that sounds good, thank you, Deanna. Uh, I appreciate the work y'all doing, I know you're doing a lot of hard work. Tell this one not, this is not easy to put together, been down that road myself. Uh, any other questions or comments? What time you gonna be at home?
Zach, boy, can order my life picture make yourself smile. I might get right.
I make a motion, we adjourn.